Good morning. I call the Saskatchewan County Commissioners to order. It is December 12, 2017, a little after 10:30 in the morning. And we are here with an appeal to the speed limit revision to Rosario Road. Mr. Berenson?
Good morning Commissioners. Dan Berenson, Director of Public Works. This agenda item falls under the purview of the county engineer, so I'm going to defer to Paul Randall Gruder.
Thanks. Paul Randall Gruder, county engineer. Good morning Commissioners. Back in June, we were asked to take a look at the speed limit on Rosario Road. And so we produced an engineer's report in August, following the Skagit County Code 10.04, that was looking at the speed limit based on the road service characteristics, 85th percentile speed, pace speed, roadside development, safe speed for curves and hazardous locations, parking practices and pedestrian activities, reported crash experience for the previous 36 months, and concurrence from -- or concurrence from the Skagit County Sheriff's Department. From that report, it -- we determined that the road characteristics and everything satisfied the 50 mile an hour speed limit that was out there. Then we were asked by you to take a closer look at that. And so I looked at other factors such as, you know, our safety plan that we've recently adopted, and looked at the build-out in the area, you know, as opposed to just the zoning. And so then on September 29, I supplemented that engineer's report. And it showed that 40 mile an hour speed limit was warranted along Rosario Road in the area in question. So we changed that speed limit on October 9. And on, according to Skagit County Code, sorry, according to Skagit County Code, there's an appeal process. So within 30 days, we have to receive a written appeal. And we did receive one on October 19, which was 10 days after the change. And so also according to our code, we're supposed to hold a public hearing, or the board is supposed to hold a public hearing, to hear that appeal and any kind of public comment within 60 days. And so today, we're having this public hearing, and it's been 56 days. So with that.
Commissioners, any questions? So do you expect a motion today? I don't see a motion in here, or what is the?
Well, there, from the way I see it, there's three options, that you can deny the appeal and keep the speed limit as posted, or you can accept the appeal and direct staff to prepare an ordinance to return the speed limits to the previous speed limits, or the defer an action to a later date.
Okay. Any other questions? We have roughly 55 minutes for this, and I have, can you raise your hands, how many want to comment? Okay, so let's start out going for three minutes apiece, and we'll try to do some in favor and some of against, just to try to balance it out a little bit. So first one on the list here is Diane.
Dwayne.
Dwayne, yep, Dwayne Napp. And then if there's somebody opposed who want to just go ahead and walk up there close, and we'll...
Good morning. I'm Dwayne Napp. I live at 3910 Bay Lane. And we have a PowerPoint presentation to sort of brief people who may have not been here for previous hearings on the situation. And I will do as much as I can in my three minutes, and then we have a number of people who would come up and finish the presentation, so that it tells the story. From the picture that you saw, and the pictures that you have in front of you, in the books that have been prepared for you, you get an idea of the traffic safety situation on Rosario Road. Many documented requests from the Rosario Road community since 2005. And over 20 years it's taken us to get the speed limit lowered. So this is not the first time this has been brought up. There are well-documented efforts to request the county to lower the speed limit, as I mentioned, since 2005. In June of 2017, a Rosario Road community resident was hit at the entrance to Seaview Way on Rosario Road, and by a distracted driver at 55 miles an hour. That resident is Jackie, who's sitting here today, and who is my wife. And the contusions and bruises, the impact was so great that it damaged three other cars coming the other direction, and totaled her car. And resulting in a great deal of trauma, and she fears for her life every day that she enters that roadway. When she leaves our homes, and when she comes home. So it's a very emotional decision. And most other people who live along Rosario Road, especially those who live in the dozens of driveways and roadways that do not have a safe sight distance, experience this. And when I've been out talking to the over 200 people that I've talked to personally, everybody has a story about how they almost were either hit or killed at that intersection, or along Rosario Road. Is that my three minutes?
One more minute.
So I'm here today to speak not just on behalf of Jackie and the residents who live in our neighborhood, but I'm here on behalf of the hundreds of residents who have signed the petition. That's 180 as of today, representing over 250 residents in our community. I'm here on behalf of the Delmar and Seaview Association residents, 300 taxpayers, the schoolchildren who must wait for the school buses and cross Rosario Road every day, mostly in the dark, and there are pictures provided in your book, the Skagit County Sheriff's Department, the Mount Erie Fire Department, the Anacortes School District, and Lakeside Industries. The Anacortes Police actually support the 40 mile an hour speed limit as well, because of the continuity needs along the roadway. Drivers from the United States Postal Service, FedEx, UPS, Serenity Pest Control, and Simple Yards also support the change in the speed limit.
Thank you. Next, somebody opposed?
Opposed, yes, sir.
Name and address, please.
Todd McLean, 14222 Hemlock Place, Anacortes. It's in the Sunset West subdivision, directly off Rosario. We lived there for 20 years. Our children stood on the road, waited on the bus for years and years, never a problem. They just stand back from the road. It's common sense. I have a quote here from the county engineer, this is in Skagit Valley Herald, says, "Well, crash data and average speed studies indicated no need for a reduction." He said the change will reduce confusion by normalizing speed limits. I don't know anybody that was confused. I know dozens of people that use this road every day. Nobody's been confused. I don't know anybody. Normalizing speed limits would be raising the north end of Rosario Road back to 50. That would reduce a lot of confusion. What this has done, I commute every single day. I come out of Cougar Gap, and you take that right, and you head towards Anacortes. What this speed reduction has done has created long lines of slow-moving vehicles. If 40 is okay, there's a lot of people doing 30 now, because it's dark. They're afraid. Maybe they shouldn't even be driving. So what this causes is people that are four or five vehicles back will zip out and try to pass all these cars. And the last month, I've almost been hit three times by people doing that. In the last 20 years, nothing, zero, no problems at all. In the last week, I've seen more people pulled over there than I have in the last probably decade. So I don't know if this is just a blatant move to raise money through traffic fines. I'm not sure. And one other thing that's kind of ephemeral, that's hard to touch, there's a lot of military families, probably a disproportionate amount of military families that use that road. Okay, the difference between 40 and 50 is a few minutes. How many people have spent five years away from your family deployed in the military? 10 years away from your family in the military? Okay, raise your hand. I have. 15 years? Keep going. Okay, I have. There's not one thing that military person would do to spend one extra minute with your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is it? Jim Lau?
Jim, yeah, Lau.
Jim Lau? And if there's somebody else who's opposed, they can go ahead and start going up.
Sorry, I got to get to this. Well, it looks like I might need some help get the presentation here.
You pushed to get the full screen?
Yeah, but I'm trying to find my presentation. I'm using up all my time here. So, here we are. All right. Sorry about that. I'm Jim Laurel, and live at 3918 Bay Lane in the Seaview area. And I'm also president of the Seaview 3 Homeowners Association. I want to refer quickly here to some illustrations of reasons why the 40 mile an hour limit is justified. And I want to focus on two different things. One is the continuity of speed limits, and the other is the issue of limited sight distance by residents that are trying to enter/exit, but primarily enter Rosario Road. This is an illustration of the network of primary kind of roads that feed into Rosario Road. And if you, if you see like coming out of Skyline, you've got a 25 mile an hour limit feeding to a 40. Over here, you have a 40 mile an hour limit coming out of Anacortes, 35 around Campbell Lake Road. And then, on the other end, south end, you've got 35 again. This area here is the area in question of Rosario Road, where these are the limits that were in place prior to the change. So this two-mile section, lost my cursor. Anyway, there's a two-mile section at 50 miles an hour, with a section that had a 40 mile an hour advisory limit because of sight distance problems for Seaview Way. And that's that little red section. This is what it looks like trying to pull onto Rosario Road, okay? From a driver's standpoint. And you can see cars coming northbound only as they emerge around the curve, coming down a hill, but obscured by trees and by a steep embankment. So pulling out, there's a number of times, especially with the old speed limit, where you'd start to pull out, and suddenly a car comes 50 miles an hour plus around that curve. You have to hit the brakes. Sometimes you have to back up. It's just an overall bad situation for the 100-plus drivers in Seaview, which is just their only access in and out. At the same intersection, this is the kids' situation, to get the bus, okay? Crossing Rosario Road with that oncoming traffic coming around the curve to the, from the left here, excuse me, they have to cross the road. Driveways, Orca Lane, and then you have this situation where you have relatively narrow shoulders, with problems with service vehicles and so forth blocking and people passing.
Thank you.
I live on 4579 Jeanette Road. I agree with the concept that the 50 mile an hour speed limit be renewed, and for continuity, it should include changing back the 40 mile an hour zone that got suddenly put down on people using that road a couple of years ago. That has no business being a 40 mile an hour zone either. If you do indeed drive up and down there every day, you'll see that there's very, very few places that are actually hidden in any reasonable definition to prevent people from entering Rosario. And one of the worst offenders is some of those little things that we saw up here, where they've built a gate and bushes and trees, so they can't see the road. And the simple solution to their problem is to fix that, not change the speed limit of the road. It's my understanding that the accident that was put here in the beginning, and I'm sorry for the trouble you people went through, but my understanding is, they were rear-ended by a truck with someone texting. That has nothing to do with the speed limit. That's just stupidity. And there's laws for that. And slowing them down won't stop them from doing that. We live out there. We drive it every day. We don't see hidden entrance issues, the possible exception of the guys up on the hill there. And I just don't feel that we should do it. It makes no sense. It's a heavily used road, and the little charts up there with the speed limits on both ends, they're fine. In both cases, they're wobbly roads. Rosario is straight, one little curve.
Thank you.
That's my view.
Roger Noor?
He was here. I was hearing. The guy that just spoke.
My name's Roger Noor. I live at 6067 Central Avenue. And prior, president of Delmar Association, which is a residents' association of 300 members all along that road. I drive that road very often myself, just to get up to properties that I have on the road. And I'm here to talk about keeping the 40 mile per hour speed limit for several reasons. One is depending on where, the distance of the road. If you talk about a two-mile stretch, the time you save doing 50 is 36 seconds versus 40. If you're talking about a longer stretch, it would be more, but we're talking seconds. A commercial break, basically, is how long that is. I looked up the stopping distance on a wet road, and stopping distance for a car is about 100 feet longer at 50 versus 40. 100 feet is a big difference when you have a panic situation, a crash situation. It's about five car lengths. Makes all the difference whether you smack into the car in front of you, or if you have a safe stop. So to me, that trade-off, it makes it right there. I'd much rather trade off 100 feet of stopping distance, and that road is wet a lot. Those who drive it know that, especially with all the trees on each side, versus saving that 36 seconds or seconds out of the drive time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Ireland. I represent one of the military members who drives this road every single day. As you can see, I am the only military member here today. Oh, sorry, hi. But unfortunately, because this is at 10:30 on a Tuesday, most of the people who are service members are working. And those folks who use it as a commuter road are working. So 36 seconds, you highlighted, is not a long time. But 36 seconds, five times a week, is six minutes, which translates to 24 minutes in a month, long enough for me to put one meal on the table for my family. And for somebody who works, that is a lot of time, and that is special time. So, you know, that is important. And when you're talking about all of the families, all of the military members who work at Woodby, when they have a choice as to where to live, everything that we do matters. So increasing the drive time on a heavily commuted road matters. When this affects the economy, because they choose to live in Anacortes because it's not that far away. They could choose to live in Oak Harbor, Coopville, other places. But when Anacortes is a 25-minute drive, we choose to live there, and we choose to support the local economy in Anacortes. As we decrease the speed limit and do other things to make it less hospitable, people may choose to move other places. So it's something to think about, it's something to consider. Realize that for 300-plus military families, it is a commuter road. I drive it every single day. I have never had any sort of safety issues on that road. I see children every single day. I've never seen any sort of issues with those children. They stand far enough back from the road. I've seen the bus. I drive behind the bus most days. There's never been any sort of safety issues. So, I mean, you know, these are things that we should consider. It is a commuter road. It is not just a transit road. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Michael Noiz.
Chief.
And if there's somebody else opposed?
Thank you Commissioners. I'm Michael Noiz. I'm fire chief of Skagit Fire District, 11th Mountainary Fire Department. Our headquarters at 1485 Deception Road. We have a secondary station at the bottom of the hill on Marine Drive, here to support the continued 40 mile an hour zone. Seconds matter. Sheriff Rye Colonel Vouch, for that and our business. The biggest thing we teach our people though, is seconds matter, you got to get there first. Yes, it's a commuter road. It's another reason to slow it down. Born and raised on the island, nearly 50 years now. Used to bicycle from Shark Park to my house in Anacortes on my way home from work. That was a lot different 30 years ago. Lot of traffic. My, it's, I understand people are wanting to get home, getting to work. I spent 14 years in the Navy Reserves, AO1. I understand what you're up against, but we got to get there. We got to get people home safe. Just last month, and the Skaticoor School District can verify this, I watched somebody come down the hill at Marine Drive, well over the 40 mile an hour speed limit, doing something under the dash, blow right past a school bus, with kids standing in front of it, the red lights flashing, the gate out, they blew right past it. Fortunately, she let me go after her. We got the license plate number, and hopefully something got taken care of on that. I won't mention who the driver was. But it happens. It's still there. We know if we posted at 30, they'll drive 40. If you post at 40, they'll drive 50. I just request that you give the Sheriff's Department the support they need to continue to change patterns. It's, I've been drilling that road all my life, as long as I've been driving. It's been different speed limits. We've adjusted. But, yeah, seconds do matter. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Bruce Mullen. I work for the city of Anacortes. I worked in traffic control for 30 years. I'm opposed to the 40 mile an hour speed limit. I think we have some pretty good drivers in the service that go that back way. We also have State Patrol and other responding services that go that way, and minutes count. Two minutes out of your life doesn't really mean a lot. I've been told that, you know, what's two minutes out of your life? Well, out at Deception Pass, there's an average of 22 jumpers off the bridge a year. I don't want to be the guy that says, "Can you hang on a couple minutes?" Two minutes does mean a lot. There is, in the summertime especially, the State Patrol goes whizzing up and down that, either for the bridge problems or anywhere else. That's the way they go to get there. They don't go the other way. It's too congested and too slow. That way seems to be cleared for not only drivers that are responding, but our service people that want to get back over to the base, back and forth. That's the chosen way. I haven't seen any problems out on that road in the 21 years that I've lived there. And as you can see, the road alpine is out there, or asplin, and every one of these trees are trimmed like an umbrella up 30 feet. There is no clearing problem. The county's done an impeccable job of taking care of it all. It's all sprayed and mowed. My side streets out there brushed off and kept up. It's one of the better areas to be kept up the way it is. And I'd like to just, I'd like to stay at 50 for the problems that could occur not being 50. When there is wrecks out there, it's typically, like we say in town, it's operator error. Somebody pulled out in front of somebody else, somebody's speeding or distracted driving, which has nothing to do with speed limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Roger Jewitt. Is there anybody else opposed also who can go up?
Good morning. I'm Roger Jewitt. I'm a homeowner in Seaview 3, and I support the 40 mile an hour speed limit. The principal reason is the safety of the area. I owned a home on Rosario Road in 1987 to 1997, and then I moved into the area again in 2012. The volume of traffic and the speeds that people drive, amazing contrast between those days. And I feel strongly that 40 is the appropriate speed limit for that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Michelle McLean. I live at 14222 Hemlock Place, and that is right off Birch. So first, let me say I'm sorry you got rear-ended, Jackie. I understand what that feels like. I've been rear-ended too, but not on Rosario. I was rear-ended on Langley Boulevard on the military base with someone going 50 in a 35 who was messing with the radio. I too was scared to make a left-hand turn into the old security building. I would go up the hill, through the light, turn around and make a right-hand turn, and I did it for years. So I understand your fear of stopping there, because people do come up quickly, but maybe going down Birch, coming back around and making a right turn into your neighborhood would ease some of that fear for you. We have lived there 20 years, and I lost my dog on that road. He was a black lab. And he got out, and it was dark, and someone hit him and killed him. It was not their fault. He got out. He was in the road. They did nothing wrong, but I buried my dog because of it. I don't think I need to lower the speed limit because my dog didn't know to stay out of the road. I've never had any problems driving on Rosario for 20 years. The straightaway gives me an opportunity. If you want to drive 40, and the speed limit is 50, I'm fine with that. I don't have a problem with that. There's a line of sight, a straightaway, where I can get around you if you feel you need to go 40. But I don't feel that I should be mandated to go 40 when it's safe to go 50. And that 50, seeing it's safe, is based on your own data that said that that is, that the speed is okay for that road. Please just let me pass you. You don't need to flip me the bird because I want to go 50, and you want to go 40, or you want to go 30. I have no problems passing, and I try and be respectful when I do pass people. But some people will try and speed up and keep me from passing them, and that's just ridiculous. That's just poor behavior. So I would like to go back to 50. I'd like to recommend that it go back to 50. Maybe another 20 years will go by, and I'll look at it again. But my children too stood on Rosario and Birch Way for the school bus from fourth grade through high school, and never had a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Roger Robinson? And if there's somebody else opposed?
I'm Roger Robinson. I live at Rosario Beach. We've been out there since 1885. We've seen a lot of people come and go. Before I go any further, can I see a show of hands? Who in this audience is in favor of this zone or this speed change? Could I? Could I see how many are opposed, would like to keep at 50 or 70? Okay, good, thanks, thanks. I'm just, I want to, I want to thank you guys for what you did a while back in changing the speed limit. For us that live out there that aren't transient, that don't live in town, that don't work at the Navy Base, that aren't here today and gone tomorrow, life is now good again on South Fodago. It's a small amount of speed that you guys have to deal with to slow down to get to work. But this morning in coming here, we saw two people walking on Rosario Road casually, which you don't usually see, I mean, prior to you changing the speed limit. People now bike, they walk, they walk their dogs, they jog. At 50, 50, we all know, means 65 or 70. At 50, 50, we all know means 65 or 70. I've been guilty of it myself a lot of times, but I'm just saying that as far as peace of mind and safety, et cetera, et cetera, it's a lot nicer on South Fodago now that you've done your speed limit change, and I hope that you hold true to your word and keep it 40 miles an hour. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Ken Ireland, I live at 2102 10th Street in Anacortes. And I'm here to speak very briefly in opposition to keeping the speed limit at 40 miles an hour. First of all, it's an honor to participate in the democratic process, and just being up here for you, ma'am, I'm sorry for your injuries, clearly a distracted driver is to blame for that. With regard to, with regard to the speed limit, the road clearly is designed for that, it's designed for 50 miles an hour. The, and while I respect the opinion of our public safety officials that would like to see it at 40, clearly, you know, it's a matter of risk management. Clearly, at 25 miles an hour or 30 miles an hour, the road would be even safer. However, we do have, as previously mentioned, we have military personnel and others who are commuting both northbound and southbound on that road, and that does, that does require more time in commuting, reducing the, reducing the quality of life for those, those people that have to make that commute. With regard to the numerous stated accidents on that road, I would argue for our law enforcement that that is simply a matter of proper law enforcement. If we have an issue with anybody going 60 miles an hour, or even 55, in a 50 zone, let's write them up, let's get the word out there that you will be ticketed on Rosario Road. Let's enforce the existing laws rather than inconveniencing all those folks that, that are now having to commute at a slower speed. I realize also that this is a natural outgrowth of the process of increasing popularity in the Anacortes area, both for military folks and other folks, and this is not going to be the last time there's a debate about speed limits either on this road or in other places. But, but at this point, based on the traffic and mishap data, it appears very clearly to me that we should continue to allow our commuters and others to drive at 50 miles an hour. I appreciate the time, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mark Rappel?
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for having us today. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your meeting last, a few months ago, and the determination you made at that point.
Your name again?
What's that?
Your name again?
Oh, Mark Lawrence, 11633 Point Place, Anacortes. I guess you need that, I apologize. We did make, did do a traffic study ourselves, probably not to the limits of what those folks did over there did, however, we did see what needs to be done, and we presented that before. I don't feel like we need to go through that whole scenario again. Second of all, we are, that road is for guests, and also for people that live there. One of the concerns that I've seen is the bicyclists that come through there, I talked about last meeting that we were here, also the amount of cars, the quantity of cars that are going through that road every day. With the Navy Base, I support the Navy 100%, and also the other military folks there, and the commuters that are headed there, however, it's our community that we all live in, and we would like to see that speed limit stay where it is as of today. We lowered it to 40 miles an hour, and from what I am hearing from the, the community people that live on that road and also drive that road, I feel safer, and also I see the amount of people and talk to the people, that they feel safer and feel better about the situation, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else opposed?
Can I say one more thing?
Very quickly, we've got other people have chances.
I just forgot what I was going to say. Yeah, sorry. Like I said, all right, so this came about, like, Monday morning got up, new speed signs were up, red flags were on it, didn't know anything about it, I opposed it. Arbitrarily changing it to 40 to match everywhere else, are all the other roads in Skagit County going to be assessed to 40 miles an hour? Best Road, Ovenville Road, all of the other major roads where there have been major accidents, why is Highway 20 that has some of the deadliest accidents still 50? What about the girls that died in that car wreck? It's still 50. Just because you have an accident doesn't mean you have to lower the speed limit, it means that someone was negligent, and that person should be held accountable. But I don't see going around lowering the speed limit on all county roads to 40 is really the answer to the question, and to fix a problem that you foresee because of something horrible that happened. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Mark Rappel? Raphael? Excuse me.
My name's Mark Raphael, I live at 3852 Bispoint Road, and I'm here to speak in support of the 40 mile an hour speed limit. I am a nurse here at Skagit, critical care and sometimes the ER, so I see firsthand what happens when people get in motor vehicle accidents. And the difference between 40 and 50 in terms of mechanism of injury is significant. I also have an 11-year-old who waits for the bus out there, and you would think each morning, and at this time of year, of course, it's dark, you would think that, you know, common sense would tell you to stay off the road, but I'm sure some of you have had children in the past and maybe right now, and common sense is not really a high priority with an 11-year-old boy's mind. They don't have a lot of common sense a lot of the time. So, and I see other kids walking and staying, waiting for the bus as well out there. So that is a consideration. I don't think that a small amount of time meant in terms of commuting each day is too much of an inconvenience for safety. I know people have to be accountable for their mistakes, and, but we don't want to have someone become seriously ill because somebody, or, and hurt because somebody made a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou, Lou Robinson? Robinson?
Hi, I'm Jan Robinson from Rosario Crest Lane, and I wanted to say that this may seem like a commuter road, but it's actually a neighborhood road. And I don't have the data on the number of entrances off of it, but it is actually a neighborhood road. 52 entrances, and two, and a two-mile stretch. And those 52, you've already heard that Seaview actually has 100, probably 100 drivers, and there are a couple of others that have multiple houses, but a lot of them are single houses. So this is really a neighborhood road. And I wanted to say, this is a thought that I actually haven't discussed with the lady, Jackie, but if it weren't for her car, she would not be with us today. It's potential. There is a young man who died some years ago that was a bicyclist, and he was hit at 16, and it destroyed the family. His death, he was riding on Rosario Road, and it was, this was in my time, it may not have been in most of your times here, but it was very sad. And I do want to say bicyclists, walkers, children waiting for the bus, it's a neighborhood road. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else opposed? And then Deborah Brody?
Hello, my name is Lindsey Fowler, 3922 Bay Lane. I have, the, what I need to express to you is my own safety and the safety of others. I support the 40 mile an hour speed limit, and I don't really have a whole lot of other things to say that hadn't been said, so, thank you.
Thank you. And that's all, I have signed up, so if there's somebody else who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Deborah Brody at 3906 Bay Lane, and I...
Okay, excuse me, go ahead.
And I support the 40 mile an hour speed limit. I've been commuting the road almost 20 years, and I've noticed since the 40 mile an hour was changed, or 50 to 40 was changed, a significant, just kind of a deep breath, you can, you can pull out now without counting to three if I'm going to have to abort this, this mission of going down the route, so I just want to say thank you, and I support 40 mile an hour. Thanks.
I'm Ray Ramsey, I live at 13916 Seawood Lane in the Seaview community. I'm here to support the 40 mile an hour speed limit, and I've heard three things today. First off, our county commissioners have commissioned an engineering-type study, according to the parameters that they're given, and they've concluded that the 40 mile an hour is appropriate. Another thing I've heard is that, and I calculated myself, it's a 36 minute, 36 seconds in time addition. So, with a good conscience, I could never take 36 seconds and compare that to any form of the safety that has been mentioned over and over and over again by various people. 36 seconds is not worth any chance. I would stay with the 40, please.
Thank you. We still have more on the list here. Todd McLean?
I'm gone, sir, thank you.
You're gone? Carol Aylor? We want to make sure we get through everybody on the list here, and then John?
Christopher.
Carol Aylor's 3998 Windcrest Road, off of Orca Lane. I want to thank those who appealed this, who actually gave their home address. A group of you did not, that makes it difficult to understand the whole parameters of where you're coming from. I appreciate the courtesy of those who, who told. As you see by the zoning map, most of this area is zoned residential. It's built out, was built out in 1945, 46 through 1962 and '03, at the same density as a place in Anacortes where now they have 40 mile an hour speed limit. But there are three basic issues that are being confused here. The first issue on a road is the engineering. It was beautifully engineered, Rosario was, as the level road to Rosario Beach when it was built in 1938, '39. The east-west part of that road is as it was, and if you want to see what site, if site distance is fine, you just try going into those driveways, if you're in, either in the fire department or anyone else. You've got to do something about your permit process, access permit process. It's not good, it hasn't been good for 50 years. I can say that because we bought in 1963 in subdivision 8. We couldn't sell, people say we should have sold, we couldn't have sold in the 80s because there was too much noise and too much danger from the Navy. So we stayed, and we have to live with where we are, and we are living where we are, we want to be safe. So you have the engineering. It was re-engineered in 1971 when they broke through Cougar Gap to go to Deception Pass Bridge. Before '71, it was a dead-end road, and that's how it was built and designated. So you have the engineering, and you have a change in condition. You have how easy it is to drive along it safely, and it certainly is. Doesn't have eight-foot shoulders the way the documents say, it's five feet at my mailbox, but okay, it's a nice wide road. But there's two other parameters, how people drive, and they're driving like idiots, especially this last year. People, person after person, can't stay on the right side of the yellow line, they can't stand the speed limit. When they pass right in front of, I'm on Rosario Raceway, a guy doesn't want to go slower than 60, another one wants to pass him, he can't stay in his passing lane, he's got to use the shoulder. 12 feet isn't enough for him to drive down that road. And here I am at my mailbox, and I never go back to the mailbox again without looking to see who's coming in both directions. The third aspect...
Thank you.
McLean's had twice, I want to say one more sentence.
One sentence.
There is no language that I can find from any transportation person that deals with the safety of those who actually live on a road. And there's 26 of us who live on that road.
Thank you, Carol.
We want to be safe. I don't want to be killed just because that's what you do to prove that a road is dangerous.
John? And then Tom Glade?
John, Christopherson, 13886 Rosario Road. I've lived there 12 years. I've seen accidents, very close accidents, and even some drivers doing the speed limit. But what's scary is at night, I'm trying to pull out, I look both ways, it's dark, work is over, so people going northbound, coming from southbound, they're going home. And it's not like the clocks are being punched, but they want to get home earlier or get home somewhere else. Also, there's a sign up on both sides of Rosario Road to watch for deer. And has anybody hit a deer? There's one there. The deer probably lost, but you could have gotten hurt and damaged and could have been real serious. There's some other things, a school bus being passed, what happens is they put down the gate, but there's some young boys that want to get to the TV or go have a snack or play ball, they'll, they could, I've got a friend, not from this area, that did that, his son did that, and he's crippled for life. And it's just small things like that that can happen, and it's just, it's too bad. And, you know, it was said that, what is it, three minutes in a week that a fast driver is losing? Why don't you forget that second cup of coffee, or get up three minutes earlier? Just make it happen, just make, make that time, I mean, 30, 40 seconds. How many people go back for a second cup of coffee or take a phone call? You know, things can get distracted, and yes, I worked in various places where it was important to get to work, but just, just think about it, hitting a deer, it could be all over, so. Anyway, I hope it stays at 40. It's, I live right there on Rosario Road, I've got to look both, both ways, of course, and I look one way, and a truck or a car could be passing me, I'm waiting, and a sand and gravel truck go by, and I get, get a lot of rocks that could hit my windshield and does, or also my mailbox is there, and I have to stand behind it to get the mail just because a speeder's going close to the shoulder, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Tom Glade, I reside at 210 Mansfield Court, Anacortes, Washington. I'm here this morning representing Evergreen Islands and the members that live on Fodago Island, Guimas Island. I'd like to give a longer view of what's going to happen to the South Fodago Island, and so these are the comments made by a Washout managing, planning manager at the Anacortes Planning Commission hearing on the Sharp's Corner Roundabout. So Mr. Carlson says, "So one of the things we're looking at is, how do you get from Sharp's Corner to Oak Harbor? Over time, as traffic grows and grows, well, guess what? That peak hour in the morning and that afternoon is going to grow, 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 grow." And at some point in time, it may be four hours in the morning and four hours in the evening, and that bridge is all backed up all the way to the shrimp shack, that's what's going to happen. So you think about traffic continues to grow, those... So, you think about traffic continues to grow, those left turns that Carol Ehlers was talking about are going to get harder and harder and harder to make to the point where we're going to have to say, "Sorry, you can't make any left turns anymore." Matter of fact, the study that was discussed earlier about the four options accessing Island County, widening the bridge, those studies go to two groups, the Island County RTO and the Skagit County RTPO. These are policymakers, the county commissioners. Matter of fact, we have one of the commissioners in the audience tonight. Commissioner Wiesen is here from Skagit County. He's on the policy board. That's kind of the big picture of it, and the discussion about what to do about it specifically happens at those regional planning organizations. So, your mayor has a strong voice at that RTPO, and that she has a voice at the regional level, the voice, what you want to see happen and what kind of improvements you think make a big difference. I hope that kind of touches on it. I'm trying to give a kind of global picture of it, and a kind of dark, you know, in a way, because we live in such a beautiful place that everyone wants to live in. There are, every day, 2,000 crossings of the bridge occur, which means 7 million a year. In more than distant future, SR-20 to Oak Harbor may be widened to a four-lane extension to the current SR-20 from Berlin to send to Sharp's Corner. Fodago Island would become a highway stepping stone like Mercer Island is. And one last thing is, 10 miles an hour is, in kinetic energy, is the square of the velocity. So, 10 miles an hour is 100 times the energy from reducing it from 50 miles or 40 miles an hour. So, we definitely support reducing the speed limit in this rural, I mean, this rural area to 40 miles an hour. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bruce Mullen? Is there Bruce? I didn't get the proper name. And then Tom Tuttle? I believe that's all I have signed up. Is there somebody who didn't get a chance? Anybody else like to have a chance? John Tuttle?
I can support anything, but I'm, excuse me, I'd like to stick with...
And like I said, is there anybody else who has not had a chance to speak? Go ahead and line up.
My name is John Tuttle. I'm a professional civil engineer working with DNIAP. I come from the perspective of deviation design standards and safety, very difficult to deviate away from safety. It's very, very important to me as a professional engineer. It's one of the first things we think about. We think about narrow shoulders, we think about clear zones, we think about the ability to kind of come away if there's potential oxygen or run-out zone. There are so many factors that come in that are not the emotional. I'm hearing a lot of the emotional. That's very, very important. I'm coming from the practical, kind of the engineering, to where I don't want to distract from what's going on. There are so many opinions and so many, I'll say, kind of opportunities here to hear more of what those that are there, rather than from the engineering perspective, is I guess what I'm here to say. But when it comes to the safety, that's the difficult thing that I want to put them out. That's the thing that we think about most, and it's the hardest thing for us not to take as top priority. So, that's why I kind of wasn't prepared to speak today, as you might as well recognize. But I'm here from the engineering perspective, saying the roadway itself has a lot of conditions that are changing. It's a very global change that is responsive. I drive a lot of 35 mile an hour road on the way. I come today, a lot of driveways, and it's a more defined roadway than what we have out on Rosario Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Dwayne?
My name is Julie Kazlik, and I don't do this. I live at 3928 Harbor Place in Seaview. My husband's a commander in the Navy. We've owned the house 11 years. He's made the commute many times. I stand at the corner of Seaview and Rosario several mornings with my kids, and it's scary. They stand 25 feet back from the road. I stand at the stop sign. I watch for the bus. Because otherwise, they're so far back, the bus doesn't know we're there. And it's not because of trees that haven't been cut down. They're the same trees that were there when we bought. It's just the way the road is built with the slope. There are dump trucks that go through there far past 70, and I know this because I pull out behind them and chase them down and clock how fast they're going. They now, yesterday, I got one going 50, but he slowed down to 45. So, that's because if my kids go out there to cross the street, they can't stop. And when they're pulling a trailer, they cannot stop. And the lower you make the speed limit, they're always going to go 10 over. I support the police for watching that recently. It's made a huge difference with those trucks especially. And I think one thing that could be done is maybe we need to go that gravel pit and tell the people, the police hand out flyers or something, say, "Don't speed anymore. We're going to pull you all over." I don't know. I don't know how it's done. I just want to say that I'm down there. I see it every day, and it scares the hell out of me. And for the last three months, before the speed limit changed, actually, six months, sorry, before the speed limit changed, I was driving my kids to and from school every day because I wouldn't even let them take the bus. They crossed that street, they've had cars blow by that thing. I've taught them to stand there and look, but they're kids. You know, some days they forget somebody was, you know, someone farted on the bus, as they say. It was too funny. They're laughing all the way home. They don't pay attention, and cars have gone around the bus. We had a meeting, little wives get together the other night, and there were six incidences of kids that almost were hit. You know, cars went around. But we don't report it. We know nothing's going to change, so we just talk about it and have a glass of wine. But thank you very much for changing the speed limit, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Dwayne?
I'd just like to wrap up with the data that's been presented. So, over the last six months, over 200 people have been involved in a traffic and safety investigation, including a professional transportation licensed firm in Washington State. Somebody used the word arbitrary, and I'd like to clarify that this is anything but arbitrary. You have, we've presented to the commissioners and to the Public Works Department hundreds of pages of data and engineering reports based on the Federal Highway Administration Safe Speed Limit Guidelines. And that report is in your document today. It's a two-page report. Last time, at the last hearing, it was an 11-page report. So, they have been provided with hundreds of pages of data and signatures from now 184 people on petitions, representing 250 people who are residents, 32 letters of support, 29 photo pages. And just to make the point once again, that this is about safe site distance. And while there are 52 exits and entrances in that two-mile area, dozens of those do not have a safe site distance, both private roadways and residential roadways. And so, there's been a great deal of evidence presented. Thank you for your consideration, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Sheriff Recker, would you like to say anything at all? Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? So, this will be the last one, if I don't see another hand or somebody walk up there.
I'm Carol Harrington, 4579 Jeanette Road. I think the issue here is not time, but is risk. The road is built effectively for 50 miles an hour. So, the frustration is to be driving a well-engineered road at a speed that is inappropriate for that road. The second point I'd like to make is that I have friends in Skyview, or whatever the name of it is, Seaview, and I think they need to re-engineer their entrance. That is a terrible entrance and should be redesigned. It is not the fault of the road, it is the fault of the landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? We do have, Lady in back has not spoken yet, so...
My name is Vicky Singleton, and I have quite a few clients in Seaview. I have for the last 15 years, and I've also had many clients on Bispoint. I'm coming and going that road constantly. Some of my clients in Seaview, I've taken care of their pets while they've been out of town, so I've been out there twice a day, 6:30, 7:00 in the morning and again in the evening, high-peak traffic times. I have sat there numerous times and feared for the schoolchildren, and I wholeheartedly agree with what you said, and that is one of the reasons why I'm here. I do also understand, and have sat and listened to all the other issues that go along with this, and yeah, I see other problems too, but you know, safety has got to be the first issue, and our children have to be the first issue until they can get all this other stuff ironed out. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have public comments supposed to start at 11:30, so any other comments from the commissioners? We had a potential motion here to either deny, accept, or defer. Any thoughts?
Is it possible for us to add this to a Monday, the 18th agenda to decide it at that point?
Yep, so we could defer to make our decision on the 18th?
Yeah, so I move to close the public hearing and put a decision during the consent agenda period as a miscellaneous on Monday, December 18th.
Second.
Let's move to second to close the public hearing and defer the decision until our Monday consent agenda item as a miscellaneous item on Monday, the 18th. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed? Passed. Thank you. Anything else covered this time, Dan?
No, thank you very much.
No, thank you very much. With that, we adjourn for a few minutes. Thank you.